Good afternoon, everyone. I'll gavel the meeting to order. For those of you in cyberspace, thank you for joining us today for what's the 17th regularly scheduled meeting of the ETSU Board of Trustees. On February the 14th, 2013, President Nolan stood next door in the Millennium Center and pointed to the vacant lot to his right and announced that a long-awaited dream was about to be realized. To a roomful of students, faculty, staff, local arts leaders, Dr. Nolan announced the ETSU Arts Initiative, a major campaign to raise additional support for the university's many art programs. A primary goal of the Arts Initiative was to raise the required matching funds for the construction of the new Art Center for ETSU. Today, eight years later, I am reminded of President Nolan's words, "Dreams do come true." We're setting in that dream today. The Martin Center for the Arts is already serving as a classroom for many of our students, and discussions are taking place about the arts events that might occur here as we move past COVID-19 restrictions. I join the Board of Trustees in thanking the hundreds of people and organizations who financially supported the construction of this building, as well as provided additional funds to grow and enhance our arts programs. The spring 2021 semester began exactly a month ago today. During the first month on campus, a number of new initiatives were announced, including the launch of the ETSU Research Corporation, which is being led by former trustee Professor David Golden. A former FBI agent, Jeffrey Blanton, joined the ETSU Administration as Assistant Vice President for Administration and Director of our Emergency Management Programs. U.S. News and World Report announced that our College of Nursing is ranked nationally for its online programs. In addition, the American Association of State Climatologists recognized ETSU as being the official home for the Tennessee Climate Office. The Board commends the work of Dr. Andrew Joyner and Will Tolson for their dedication in leading this initiative. I look forward to learning more about the activities on campus from President Nolan later in his report. In closing, I want to thank the faculty, staff, and students, along with ETSU Health, for their work to provide COVID-19 testing to our campus, as well as to members of our community. From the beginning, ETSU Health has been a leader in our region's response to COVID-19. I was also very proud to learn that our students from Gattin College of Pharmacy and the College of Nursing have been active in helping distribute the COVID-19 vaccine. These are just a few examples of how ETSU is fulfilling its mission every day to improve the quality of life for the people living in this region. Thanks for all you do. At this point, I would now turn to Dr. Green and ask that he call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Ayers?
Present.
Trustee DeCarlo?
Present.
Trustee Foley?
Here.
Trustee Grisham?
Not getting sound.
I'm sorry. Here.
Trustee Latimer?
Here.
Trustee Austin Ramsey?
Here.
Trustee Ron Ramsey?
Here.
Trustee Stigall Jones?
Here.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
And Chairman Nieswenger?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. However, in accordance with Tennessee Code 8-44-108, Section C3, I have a few questions to ask for the record. Trustee Grisham and Trustee Ayers, first, are you able to clearly hear us so that you can participate in this meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Members of the Board present in the room, are you able to hear Trustees Grisham and Ayers?
Yes.
Trustees Grisham and Ayers, for the record, can you please identify any persons present in the room from which you are participating in this meeting?
I am alone. There's no one present in the room with me.
Finally, please note that because we have trustees participating remotely, all votes must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. Because attendance at this meeting is being limited to trustees, presenters, and support staff to ensure appropriate physical distancing, we are unable to receive public comments in our traditional manner due to the public's participation via livestream. However, for those of you who are watching, should you have comments that you would like for the Board to receive, please email those comments to trustees@etsu.edu. Next item of business today will be the approval of our November 13 minutes, found under Tab 1. Do I have an approval for those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Dr. Green, will you please take roll?
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Trustee DeCarlo?
Hi.
Trustee Foley?
Hi.
Trustee Grisham?
Hi.
Trustee Latimer?
Hi.
Trustee Ramsey, Ron Ramsey?
Hi.
Trustee Stigall Jones?
Hi.
Trustee Wolf?
Hi.
And Chairman Nieswenger?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is a report from the Audit Committee, met earlier this morning. Trustees, Stigall Jones, will you please give us your report?
Absolutely. We did meet this morning at 8:00. It was myself and Trustee Grishams and Ramsey that attended the meeting this morning. We had a fairly light agenda. We did hear from Ms. Rebecca Lewis regarding two revisions to the audit plan since we last met. Those were to include the College of Nursing Dean's office and a follow-up to the sunset audit that we reported on at the last board meeting. She has also gave us three reports on work that was completed since November 2020, and that was on WETS FM Radio, a memorandum on several other investigations that were open, and she talked about the completed heat map. So we did have three investigations that were closed. She also reported on the recommendations log, of which everything fell in either completed or it's being done timely. Nothing appears to be going in a delayed manner. Everything's moving very smoothly there. And then we got to actually meet our new chief, Gracia, and Officer Blanton that you just mentioned, and Dr. Jeremy Ross. They gave us a report on the safety update, annual update on the Cleary Report, and that was a very interesting report for all of the Board members that were here, and amazing what technology can do, and they are doing a great job, and we're lucky to have both of those on our team. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'll now turn to Dr. Latimer to provide an update on Academic Research and Student Success Committee.
Thank you. We had a very energizing meeting this morning. As you can see in our consent agenda, we had two action items that our committee voted unanimously on, which were the new academic program proposal of the Doctorate in Occupational Therapy, which was presented by Dr. Bishop. We also had a presentation of the approval of the Letter of Notifications for the Masters in Applied Data Science. We went through some information and discussion items. Dr. Bishop also presented the academic action notification for our period that was August 1st through December 31st of 2020. And then Dr. Scarborough gave a great presentation on the Center of Excellence in STEM Education, which was a great feeder presentation to what we discussed later regarding our Research Corporation. Dr. Johnson gave us an update on the search for the new Senior Vice President of Academics, which will be our provost. We are anxiously awaiting to see who will be coming as our finalist in that extremely important position. And then Dr. Klavier gave us an update on the very complex amount of work that goes into the accreditation process from the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. Then we moved more into a discussion period and listened to Dr. Lindblad give an update on the Ballot Coordinating Council. And then finally, we were tremendously excited to learn more about the Research Corporation Dr. Golden and Dr. Nolan presented, and we had a lot of lively discussion, and hopefully that will continue to be an agenda item. And that concludes my meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Latimer. Last but not least, our Finance and Administration Committee met before lunch. Do you report, please, Trustee DeCarlo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Administration Committee met this morning to review several items. Dr. King did the bulk of the work as usual. The Committee approved the housing and food service rates for Fall 2021, which are included in the Board Consent Agenda. The Committee discussed the salary pools in the Governor's proposed budget. The campus could receive $3.1 million in salary improvement funding from the state if the proposed budget is approved. The state only funds a portion of any salary increase, and the university relies on student tuition increases to fund the remainder. Funding for the College of Medicine and Family Medicine are $2,619,300, respectively. The Committee reviewed comparative tuition and mandatory fee information for all public universities in Tennessee. ETSU continues to be an affordable option in the state. The Committee also discussed preliminary tuition and fee increases to guide budget development. The Colleges of Medicine and Pharmacy are not requesting a tuition increase for fiscal year '22. The Tennessee Higher Education Commission has proposed a 2% limit for tuition and mandatory fees. A 1.93% tuition and mandatory fee increase will be used for budget preparation. The fees will be used for the university's match for salary increase, faculty tenure funding, funding for an SGA wellness initiative, student activity fee events, and employee insurance cost increase. The Committee reviewed a comparative analysis of the composite financial index of public universities in Tennessee. The review shows ETSU is performing well on all ratios. The Committee also received the quarterly financial update, which compares operating revenues and expenditures from the current year to the prior year. Changes for revenue and expenditures are aligned with the October budget revisions, which were discussed and approved in November. The Committee reviewed the quarterly report of contracts and agreements over $250,000. The Committee also received a report from Jeremy Ross, and we reviewed the capital budget submittals and disclosures. Capital outlay, $51.8 million for a new academic building. Maintenance, $11.4 million for covering four campus projects. Disclosed projects, $32 million for five projects. Lori Erickson also presented to the Committee, and we received a report on the ETSU HR trends and profile. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the report as it is.
So moved. Do we need a motion to accept? No. Okay. Okay. We'll catch that next. Thank you, Steve. As noted in the materials behind Tab 2, Trustee Agenda, you will find items that were discussed during this morning's committee meetings. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to pull for discussion and consideration before the full Board? Hearing none, I would then ask for a motion and a second for the adoption of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Kelly.
Second.
Thank you, Aron. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Ayers?
Aye.
Trustee DeCarlo?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Aye.
Trustee Grisham?
Aye.
Trustee Latimer?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Trustee Stigall Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
And Chairman Nieswenger?
Aye.
Item nine today is our meeting dates. I'd like to ask Dr. Green to deliver that agenda item, found under your Tab 3.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As trustees are aware, the Board is required to meet quarterly by law. In accordance with these requirements, staff is recommending the approval of the proposed 2022 schedule, found under Tab 3. Proposed meeting dates align closely with previous Board meeting schedules. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you or the trustees may have.
Thank you. Questions?
I don't have tabs. Do we have page number? Do you have that?
Here. It's page 40 on mine.
Page what?
40.
40, okay, thank you.
Pause.
No problem.
I'd asked for a motion and a second then to approve the meeting dates for the trustee meetings as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Dr. Green, would you call the roll?
Sure. Trustee Ayers?
Aye.
Trustee DeCarlo?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Aye.
Trustee Grisham?
Aye.
Trustee Latimer?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Trustee Stigall Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
And Chairman Nieswenger?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Dr. Green, I'd like to ask you to continue by presenting the next agenda item, the ETSU Trustee Self-Evaluation Report. This is under Tab 4.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you and the majority of the Board are aware, trustees completed a self-evaluation last spring, pre-pandemic. The evaluation consisted of 10 questions, half of which were items that required a rating between 1 and 5, with 5 being the highest rating. The other half of the questions allowed for open comment. There were 10 surveys distributed, with a total of seven surveys being completed. A summary of your responses may be found behind Tab 4. The two items that received the highest ratings included: the Board of Trustees advised by the Open Meeting Laws of Tennessee, 5 out of 5, and communications to the trustees are timely and effective, 5 out of 5. Based upon the results, staff would surmise that the overall Board appears to be functioning well. One item that may require attention is related to the succession planning should a president depart. This, of course, is not surprising, given the newness of the Board and the fact that you've not had to conduct a presidential search. With that said, the Board may want to explore succession planning during its summer retreat. Moving forward, trustees will be asked to complete the 2021 Self-Evaluation Report in the coming weeks, as well as a poll to determine your availability for a retreat this summer. I'm happy to answer any questions that you, Mr. Chairman, or the trustees may have.
Questions from the Board? Okay. All right. Next item, the Public Records Rule. I'd like to ask Dr. Folks to deliver this agenda item, please, found under Trustee Tab 5.
It's a pleasure to be here to deliver the Public Records Rule, which has recently been published and put out for public comment. So basically, the Public Records Rule, it largely tracks existing state law on our Open Records Act, and this rule really just formalizes the process that we've already been doing as a part of the Board's responsibility to adopt our own rules, and it, I believe, tracks what was in place from the TBR at the time that we became a locally governed institution. The Public Records Rule prescribes the process that will govern public records requests, designates the Public Records Request Coordinator for the university, and, if applicable to the particular request, establishes reproduction costs. As I mentioned, we're tracking state law here. The law at issue is Tennessee Code annotated Section 107503, which requires that public records be available during business hours to any citizen of the state of Tennessee unless an exemption exists by state law. In addition, we are allowed to recover costs for any expensive request, and the rule that we have proposed provides for that. I'll go down a quick summary of the rule. I think you have a copy of the rule with you, as well as a summary in your items. Section 1 states the purpose of the rule. Basically, it's to provide economical and efficient access to public records, as provided under the Tennessee Public Records Act. Section 2 provides definitions to key terms that are referenced in the rule. Section 3 provides that all ETSU records will be available during business hours for inspection by any Tennessee citizen unless an exception applies. Section 4 directs requests to a Public Records Request Coordinator. This is one of the things that came out of the rulemaking process, that it's a change in terminology. We used to have requests go to the public or the records custodian, who was denominated as Joe Smith, but the reality is we have multiple records custodians on campus, so we changed the name of his position, so he's now the coordinator, and when the request comes in, he will get that to, it might be the registrar, or the BRSAR, or various academic departments may be the actual records custodian. So that doesn't amount to a change in how we operate. It's just basically to clarify the nature of the position. Requests can be made orally or in writing. Citizens are allowed to appear in person and make the request. They do have to provide proof of Tennessee citizenship, and we do direct, any request for student records have to go directly to the registrar. Section 5 provides the process for reviewing and making determinations with regard to records requests, and the requirement to consult with university council with regard to legal questions. My office generally consults on the applicability of exceptions, as there are many provided by Tennessee Code that are applicable in the education context, and also federal logs simps some of our records as well. Section 6 states the schedule for reproduction costs and the process for billing. Section 7 provides that exceptions to inspect or copy public records, including certain confidential exceptions, which is as prescribed by law. The public comments period, we had the hearing on February 2nd of this year. It was held via Zoom, as we've been doing during the pandemic. We received two comments that are reflected in your materials, and I think one of those resulted in the clarification of the title of the Public Records Coordinator. With that said, just in conclusion again, this really just memorializes what we have been doing, and it is consistent with state law and the previous TBR policy on public records. So I will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Seeing no questions, I would ask that we get a motion and a second for approval of the Public Records Rule as presented. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Dr. Green?
Trustee Ayers?
Aye.
Trustee DeCarlo?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Aye.
Trustee Grisham?
Aye.
Trustee Latimer?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Trustee Stigall Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Chairman Nieswenger?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 12 today is our COVID-19 Response. Center for Teaching Excellence in Information Technology Services, under our Tab 6. I'd like to ask Dr. Amy Johnson and Dr. Karen King for our next agenda item.
So, good afternoon. It's so good to be with you today. I think this is the first presentation I've given while standing in a year. So it's really good to be on my feet, so thank you so much for that. The Center for Teaching Excellence is a relatively new center at ETSU. We were established in October of 2017. So we're younger than the Board, believe it or not, and we're a small shop, which means that everything that we do, or just about everything we do, is done in partnership with another unit on campus. So you're going to hear today, can I take this off? You're going to hear today about a lot of the support that we provided, but it's done in partnership with lots of other units on campus. So we're going to tell you a little bit about some things that we did that were new, and some things that we did in a modified format because we were all working remotely. And I don't know how to advance the slide. Let's see. Ah, there we go. The first thing we did when we knew in March that we were going to go fully remote is that my staff started working on virtual office hours. So we supported faculty in the evenings, on weekends, during the workday, whenever it was possible. We shared our cell phone numbers with faculty. We were trying to be as responsive as possible. We also created some new programming. Two notable ones were Pedagogy Preppers, How to Be Prepared to Teach in Any Environment, and Course Innovation Camp, which is a partnership with Shared Library. And we had lots of faculty who participated in these activities. We also developed an active and collaborative learning series for the College of Medicine course coordinators. We host each year a conference on high-impact instructional practices, and this year, we had already established that Dr. Jose Bowen would be, he wrote a book provocatively titled, Teaching Naked, and he's also the past president of Goucher College. We already had him on a tap to come to campus for August, but what he agreed to do, because he was not going to spend nearly as much time with us as he would have been if he had flown to Johnson City, is he did a summer workshop with deans and department chairs to help us think about ways we could teach in an innovative way. We also offered a Microchips Conference. That's that conference on high-impact instructional practices that was facilitated by Michelle Miller, who wrote a book called Minds Online. And that was actually just this fall that we hosted that. Also, you'll see this accessibility for the remote learning environment. That's a partnership with Mary Little and Disability Services. As you can imagine, accommodations look pretty different in the remote learning environment than they do in the classroom, and so we wanted to provide something that would really help faculty serve all students, not just students who conform to a more normal kind of mold. We developed some publications, and we worked with faculty to adopt Labster, which is a simulated lab software that they're using in chemistry and biology. We were able to help secure some CARES Act money for that. So all of these things, working hard to get the word out that you can be successful in a lot of different modalities. So we published this course management for teaching during COVID-19, which included information around syllabus language for if you're teaching face-to-face. What should that mask policy language look like? What should your attendance policy be in an era of teaching during the pandemic? And then, because we knew we were going to have four teaching modalities for the Fall, we pulled together a group of faculty who worked on developing a set of best practices for each of the four teaching modalities that we are using this academic... that we are using this academic year. We also did a short video for students for how you can be better at learning online yourself and help your faculty help you. And so that's been downloaded by a number of faculty included in the LMS. We modified all of our regular programming. Our For Teaching Assistance Essentials program, the IPE Faculty Development offerings, which we do on the health sciences side of the house. That's done in conjunction with Caroline Abercrombie, Brian Cross, Alicia Williams. And that's a very high-touch learning experience. But we put it all on Zoom, and we had incredible results from that. And students really were able to change, even in the virtual environment. We offered faculty learning communities. We also distribute a tip of the week. We do, we've done this for three years since the center has been established. That goes to almost 500 faculty. So each week, they get a remote teaching strategy right to their inbox. More and more and more opportunities that you see on this next slide. And one of those is, we provide in conjunction with academic technology support in Anthony Keach, which is this Cheating Works program. How do you keep students from cheating in the virtual environment? And that's something that we do for both colleges and departments. But I'm going to tell you that what happened this summer is that teaching got even harder. So we've got a pandemic, and then we have a lot of social unrest that happens in the summer. So we partnered with a number of places across campus to offer some equity and inclusion resources. And some key partners in that were obviously the Office of Equity and Inclusion, but also the Joy Fulkerson in the Center for Student Engagement and Leadership. The 21-day Anti-Racism Challenge, we had nearly 100 faculty participate in the summer challenge. That was really trying to build an inclusive curriculum. So that was a completely curriculum-focused challenge for faculty. And then we did one for students as well, which trustee Austin Ramsey helped us kick off. So thank you, Austin, for that. So I included some numbers of the number of faculty we worked with, but I'm going to tell you, these numbers are soft. Because in March, April, May, we were working too hard to keep records. And so we know we worked with 266 faculty. And those super and mega users are the business equivalent of the return customer. Those are people who have come back three, five, seven, or more times. Our heaviest user went to 14 events since we went home. So we love our super users. I wanted to include some things that changed. And one reason I wanted to include this is because these are changes that would have been good if we hadn't gone remote. Because good teaching is good teaching regardless of the delivery method. But, you know, some of the things that you see here, that Zoom time only, I only use Zoom time for active learning tasks. If you're doing more active learning, so much the better. This morning, when we were talking about problem-based learning in some of the earlier presentations, that's always going to be better for significant learning, which we define as change over time. We had faculty who essentially created studios in their homes or in their offices. You can see that there's one person who says that they use four computers and five webcams to make their teaching as engaging as possible. So we're really excited about those changing, changes that happened. But more importantly, the people who can tell this story better than me are the students that we serve. And so we asked them to tell you about teaching in the remote environment.
Last semester, I had the pleasure of having Dr. Carla Warner teach us Trends and Issues in Higher Education. You know, in COVID, we often feel like online learning is so separate and individual and sort of isolated, but she had some great Zoom meetings that were optional, and they really made me feel like a part of a community at ETSU, even though I live here in Nashville.
When I was trying to identify a placement for my internship for my major to meet graduation requirements, and I was in the process of finding that in the fall. And COVID made that difficult, as many places weren't accepting interns. Many of their workers were working from home. So it was really difficult to try to identify a field placement that could tell me, hey, yes, we can have you as an intern. And Ms. Whitney Oliver really just went above and beyond to try to help me find a field placement that would not only be valuable to me and help me to complete that graduation requirement, but that would also benefit me personally, as a student and professionally. And I'm so grateful for that.
On the first day of class, my principles of animation professor sent us a YouTube link for kind of an introductory video. He opened the video completely stone-faced, and then proceeded to pull a ukulele into frame and spend the next two to three minutes performing a song that he had written about how animation is awesome, to just kind of start off the video the semester on a high note. I think that was my favorite part about that day, and it definitely set the class up to be really fun and exciting.
Being a graduate student and moving from Michigan to Tennessee was very hard for me. And having an all-online course load was very tough as well. So having Dr. Johnson offer me asynchronous Zoom meetings every other Monday was very big for me, and it really put my mind at ease, I'd say, in terms of my course load, just because I got to meet other students and also meet my professor face-to-face.
Several of my professors worked very hard to make sure that our assignments were creative and engaging in order to foster better learning habits and to keep us engaged while in this online classroom setting. I'm very appreciative to all of my wonderful professors that I've had. I'm a nursing major, and so I've had some pretty awesome professors who are really invested in making sure that my academic success shines through.
And I'm a social work major with the Global Health and Development minor. I would say I had a lot of faculty that really went above and beyond. One faculty that really stood out to me, or two, was Dr. Stutes and Dean Wykoff. They really went above and beyond to make sure that the Essentials class at Valleybrook was still an engaging course for all of us.
I was able to take her course called Medical Anthropology, and I really enjoyed it. She taught the material through various ways, through documentaries, certain readings and papers. But most importantly, she influenced me outside the classroom as well. Through her materials, she actually allowed me to find my passion in anthropology and gave me topics to talk about in my Gilman essays, which I was fortunate enough to be awarded with for the summer.
Dr. Clem is not only my professor, but she is also, in many classes, but she is also my faculty advisor for my student internship at ETSU through the Social Work Program. And Dr. Clem is also the faculty advisor for the Student Social Work Association on campus, in which I am a part of as the president. So I work very closely with Dr. Clem. And more than anything, her outstanding leadership has meant a lot to me during this time. She is consistent and steady when we need her to be, always willing to answer questions, and she always meets us with lots of kindness. And I think that she exemplifies the profession of social work.
One positive experience I had from virtual learning is thanks to Dr. Michelle Crumley. She is a professor that I've had taken for a few courses, so I was really used to her in-person teaching style. However, the transition from in-person to virtual learning was easier thanks to her. She would take time at the start of class to inform me and my classmates about university news and events. But she would also just ask me and my classmates how we were doing, and she would take some time to learn about us, which really made me feel like I was in Roger Stout, sitting in a classroom, just learning, having a conversation with my classmates.
So I often watch these meetings from my office, and I hear a lot of people who are standing where I'm standing, who say, "I have the best job on campus." But they're all wrong, because I have the best job on campus, because I get to tell the faculty story. And the hard work and persistence of the faculty has been really just overwhelming to watch. And the work that our students have with faculty is really at the heart of student experience. And so I'm really glad that I got to talk with you all today. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Johnson? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please be a little more enthusiastic about your work?
Amazing work. Amazing. Heartfelt, yeah. Yeah, fantastic work. You can see it in the students.
Dr. King?
Thank you, Chairman Nieswenger, President Nolan, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity this afternoon to talk a little bit about ITS and some of the things that we have done in response to COVID. It is a little bit hard to follow Amy. She is very positive and always very energetic, and it's, she's very fun to work with. And so ITS has partnered with her unit a little bit to try and support some of the things that she's doing as well. I want to talk just a little bit about how ITS responded to COVID. Some of the things that we put in place, we had, we were already kind of starting to look at, but we needed some additions to the infrastructure. We needed some equipment upgrades, classroom modifications, some more software, some services. When this all started, I was kind of thinking to myself, oh my goodness, this will be a test for ITS. I can tell you that it was, but the campus really responded so well as a whole. Everybody was so easy to work with. Everybody kind of understood that we were all doing something that none of us had ever done before. So everybody was great partners in this effort. One of the things we realized in the beginning was, we don't have enough outdoor Wi-Fi. So our Wi-Fi indoors was a lot more robust, but outdoors, it was sparse. And so before, I think it was before November, we were able to add another 145 access points to outdoor areas. So the nice thing about this is, we are an edgy Rome campus. We were an edgy Rome campus, have been for a couple of years now. But that gives us also access to something called EniRome. So anyone really in our community can come onto our campus. If they register through EniRome, then they can sign up to our network and have access to the internet. And so that provides really anybody in the area internet access if they needed it, from parking lots, green spaces, all the areas that you see on this map covered in yellow now have robust Wi-Fi coverage. One of the things we had to do, though, to make that happen, and a lot of people don't think about this part of it, we had to make some really big upgrades on the backend. So we had to upgrade all the controllers, all the switches. We now, though, support a gigabit up to the access point, which is really light-years ahead of where we were just a few years ago. So that has been a great addition. We also upgraded our phone system and have implemented, it's, the tool is called Cisco Jabber. I think we're going to call it the cloud phone or something, because nobody really, it's not like Zoom. You know, now Zoom is a verb, just like Google. Cisco Jabber is not quite there yet, but soft phones are getting there. And so we turned that on just Monday, and have already had 300 requests for faculty and staff who want to use a soft phone. So this really allows any device on, using any platform, to connect with voice, video, chat, whatever you need. So now faculty, staff, all ETSU employees can answer their phone from their home computer. So it really gives working from home a lot more flexibility. It's, it took us a little while to get this upgrade done, but it has been extremely popular. Our connectivity, too, we had been working on for some time. This is a very simplistic diagram of our network. But four years ago, we had less than a gigabit of bandwidth coming to the campus. And now we have two separate 10-gigabit circuits. So you can see in the graph at the bottom, each one of those lines represents either one of our 10-gigabit circuits. And we are not even close to the midpoint on that kind of capacity. So we have a lot of extra bandwidth, but if you're, if you're part of IT, you really do need to kind of think about and try to guess what's going to happen next. Nobody could prepare really for COVID, but we do have to kind of try and stay ahead just a little bit, or we get far behind really quickly. The other thing is Zoom. I would love to tell you that I had the vision that we needed to go to Zoom when we did, which was just prior to March of 2020. But the truth is, the people in the back of the room who are supporting all this today are the ones who looked at all of these tools and made that technical decision for us some time ago. And so I was really proud, really proud to work with this team. They do a lot, and they make a lot of things happen. So I have to give them credit for making that switch when they did. We initially bought eight terabytes of storage. It's a lot of storage. We had to buy another six terabytes to support all the recordings during COVID. And we've already used 81% of what we have. So one of the other things this same team has orchestrated for the campus is moving from integrity to panopto for our lecture capture, which enables us to take, they're integrated with Zoom. So all of those Zoom recordings now can go into panopto, and we don't have to provide a lot of purchased storage space for that. We converted a lot of our ITV classrooms, that was old technology, to support the more synchronous learning. We added at least 100 cameras, microphones. All of our classrooms now are lecture capture-ready. They don't all have cameras, but all of them at least can record audio and whatever comes through the computer. So we're working on finishing out all of those rooms and making sure everything has cameras in it. We also purchased some extra equipment for checkout. We already had about 35 laptops for checkout. We purchased another 25. We purchased 200 hotspots for students, and webcams, and headsets. We gave the students the headsets. We didn't try to recycle those and sanitize them. We just let them keep those. But they were able, through our partnership with the library, to check out laptops, hotspots, anything they needed to take home, to be able to have the access that they needed. We also kind of ramped up services and support from March 2020 to January 2021. ITS took care of over 25,000 tickets. They had more than 100 topics in workshops. 18,000 times their resources were accessed. So they have provided a variety of services for the campus, either faculty and students. They did a lot of things early on, a lot of guidance with, you know, how do you get your course really online in a week? That's pretty hard to do. And so they worked really hard with that, collaborated with a lot of different groups on campus, and helped with the COVID dashboards for the university school and with the accessible syllabus template. They also put together some materials on how do you, an accelerated kind of course development. How do you get your course online quickly? And you can see there just some of the other topics that the group provides expertise in to support faculty and staff. We also have been working for some time to establish a high-performance computing for research computing in Amazon Web Services. And so we had that space already established. We were able to leverage that to provide students remote desktops through Amazon Web Services. And once we got a request to do that kind of thing, they were able to build that space and that environment in about four days. We had about 1,300 unique students who used those services over the fall semester, and about 700 students per month used that. We also worked on getting the COVID testing site up and running. That was a pretty aggressive timeline. Had some significant challenges trying to make sure that our healthcare information was all protected and that disparate systems kind of worked together to do the things that the physicians wanted to do there. So it was an exciting project, and we think that that's been extremely worthwhile. So thank you all so much for giving me this chance to talk a little bit about it. So thank you all so much for giving me this chance to talk a little bit about just some of the things that we have been able to do. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I sure would like to say thank you.
Yes.
Definitely, definitely.
Thank you. We have, we have, everybody I think in I T S has worked really hard and I think they realize that the campus does appreciate their efforts. So we have a really talented group and I'm, I'm just honored to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could reinforce the, the comment of thanks and then also, also reinforce a couple of the comments that both Dr. Johnson and Dr. King made. The past 11 months have been unique to say the least. And what you saw in both of these presentations is energy and activity across your institution. Now, this is not an institution that's asleep at the wheel. It's an institution that is aggressively supporting not only our students and faculty in the classroom, but the community as a whole. Dr. King's presentation on campus-wide outdoor internet access may not seem like that big of a deal, but I cannot tell you the time that I've seen families parking their car in our parking lots and setting up tables so that students can use that as a remote workspace. I cannot tell you the number of times that I've seen students on campus who are on their way to the library to take home a free laptop or a free webcam or a free node that allows them to access the internet. And, you know, we've not brought a lot of this to your attention. Most of our focus on COVID thus far has been about health. But I wanted you to see today by design what we've done above and beyond the health space to support both the campus and the community as we work through these unique times that hopefully will come to an end soon.
Thank you. Thank you again, Dr. King. Our next item is supporting students with critical needs. And I'd like Dr. Sherlin and Dr. Byrd to address that, please.
Thank you Chairman Nieswenger and members of the board. It's always a privilege for me to have the opportunity to introduce Dean Byrd. And she's going to be sharing the hard work of our faculty and staff to support our students through the challenges of this pandemic. I think it's important first that I share some insights with you about our students. I've worked at a number of institutions in my career and it became clear to me early on that our student body was special. And that's become ever more clear to me and the staff that I work with over the past year, how truly special our students are. Our students are resilient. They're appreciative. They're tough. Our students are humble. They're respectful of each other and they're respectful of this institution. In the spring, we converted almost all our on-ground courses to virtual formats. We emptied our residence halls in a matter of days. And we called every student in the spring to check in on them. And invariably, what we heard when we got them on the phone was, thank you. I'm making it. They locked arms with us and we finished out that term together. And then over the course of the summer, in late July, early August, our health and safety team said, we're going to need to shift in the residence halls. We're going to need to significantly reduce our occupancy levels to from just over 90% to just over 50%. To say I was worried would be an understatement. I envisioned our housing operation being overwhelmed with complaints and issues and challenges. And I'm not going to say it was easy, but that's not what happened. Our students were understanding. They understood what we were trying to do for their health and safety and they were appreciative. The amazing thing about that time, Dr. Bursch would tell you, they received more thank yous in the housing office than complaints. We understand what you're doing and why you're doing it. That said so much to our unit about our students. We didn't have many students in isolation and quarantine because of those aggressive procedures, but the students who were there, they said, thank you. They appreciated the support that our contact tracing team provided. They appreciated the food they received. We actually got pictures from our students not complaining about the food, but saying, look at what's come to my room. Now, I'm not, I'm not here to say that there haven't been challenges. It's been really hard. Our students and their families have suffered from health issues. They've suffered financially. But when they made requests to our Buccaneer Crisis Funds, they've made requests for only the monies they need to get them through the semester, as Dean Byrd would tell you. And I think the pandemic has also revealed a lot about our faculty and staff, the community of care we have here. The contact tracing team who worked seven days a week, 24 hours a day, through holidays to provide care and support for our community. Kelvin Tarquasha, our food service director, who provided the food to those students in housing, isolation and quarantine and delivered most of those meals personally himself. And to Dean Byrd, the office of the Dean of Students, which has been the go-to for student issues and crises that have come up during this pandemic. Just today, while I was sitting in this meeting, a call came in to the president's office and the voicemail was forwarded on to me. And it came in from a parent who's had to relocate to a different state. And our student's here. And she said in that call, I just want to thank you all for what you're doing. You're doing such a great job. Thank you for everything you do. May God bless you. My grandmother grew up in rural East Tennessee, worked like a Trojan all her life in rural Appalachia. And her highest compliment about somebody was, that person's the salt of the earth. I can tell you the salt of the earth is liberally scattered right here. We have people who are the salt of the earth all over this campus. And one of those is our Dean of Students. So I'm going to turn it over to her and let her share with you the information about supporting this community.
Wow, what an introduction. Well, I'm happy to be here today and I hope that some of this information will make you just feel good about the teamwork we've been doing on this campus. As you know, it has been a year like no other. And we have all pulled together to support our students and make sure they're safe, make sure that they have what they need and move forward as best we can. We have weathered this storm. It's not over yet. But I tell you what, working at ETSU has been just amazing. And when I look around this room and see the leaders here today, it is in no small part that we've weathered it so well because of Dr. Nolan, Dr. Sherlin and many others. As you know, these bullet points are probably pretty familiar to you. You know, it's been, we're doing things mostly online. We hope to change as we move forward and, and conditions get better. But it has been such a unique year for our students. We've had to develop rules and expectations. And as Dr. Sherlin said, our students have mostly followed the rules and they understand why we have certain expectations. We've put a tremendous focus on keeping students safe, changing building layouts, designs, removing chairs, cleaning rotations. We've tried to communicate to our students what we expect of them, the Buccaneer Safety Pledge, their, their housing agreements. In typical years, we want them to be gathering up, engaging with each other. And we've had to tell them not to do that and that's been hard. I'm so proud when I think about where we're at and how, you know, even at the worst point, which probably was midsummer when we had so many people in quarantine. When you compare how we've handled this, you know, compared to some other universities, it's just been amazing that, that we've weathered it so well. And it's in no small part to leadership, planning and all the things that go with that. As Dr. Sherlin mentioned, we have quite a routine for contacting students when we know that they're either contact exposures or COVID positive. Dr. Ross's team coordinates with housing. Those emails are flying across all hours of the day and night to, to make quick decisions to get students moved if needed, to support them through meal delivery, to check in on them periodically. It is teamwork that keeps these students well and moving forward. We, we realized quite quickly though, that it's not just thinking about students' health from a physical standpoint with COVID, but also thinking about their mental health, making sure they're engaged and they feel a connection to the university. We've had over 400 virtual and over 100 in-person events just in the fall and recorded over 10,000 participants for these events. And I've listed them all out here, but I also want to show you some pictures of those events. Yeah, I periodically meet with the, with deans of students from across the state and, and we would share our, our challenges and, and go back and forth. And I would say, what's working for you at MTSU? How are you getting your students engaged? And, you know, they had mentioned at one point, Sarah Sudak had said, we had, we had pumpkin painting and the students really responded to that. So I would come back and say, hey, hey Carter Warden, they were doing pumpkin painting down there. Maybe we should do pumpkin painting. But I didn't have to do that. We already had a team who was thinking about different events that might be able to engage our students more than virtual events. You know, the, the Dean of Students office is really the clearinghouse for case management on campus. I'm lucky that I have a team with a case manager and the undergraduate student success specialist, the graduate student success specialist, because we're getting reports daily. And we know that students have housing needs, that they have needs for mental health support, that they need to, you know, get connected to our food pantry or to employment opportunities. So we're fielding all those reports daily and trying to, to kind of patch the issues that, that arise with our students. We, we call those reports care reports and they come in from faculty, staff, housing staff, other students. And what you have in front of you here is just a snapshot of what we've handled over the last calendar year. Usually we, we get about 800 or a thousand of these reports. In the past year, we've had over 1,400 of these. So our work has gone up tremendously. We've handled it. We, we're glad to try to connect these students to the things that they need. We average about 80 open cases at a time. Used to, we would try to strive for about 20 open cases at a time. So it's, it's pretty, pretty busy. And if you look down that list, you'll see food, housing, clothing issues are at the top, followed by mental health concerns, academic concerns. When faculty report to us that students aren't attending their Zoom sessions or classes, we're reaching out to them, trying to see, you know, why, what can we do to help you? Buc-E's Food Pantry, it's a great resource for our campus. And thank heavens, we've had it over the last year. Use of Buc-E's has gone up 30%. We were ticking upwards each year anyway, but the pandemic has really impacted the usage of that service. I'm happy to share with you today that we have some really good plans for Buc-E's. One of these was already in the works and that is to try to have a distribution site in the student center because it's a little out of the way right now for students to go and pick up a bag or a box. So that's moving forward. We've got our facilities team looking at a location and giving us some estimates on some renovations. And my hope is that we have that ready for the fall. Another thing that we're planning for this fall is a swipe out hunger program. And what that will be is that students will be able to donate their guest passes from their meal plan. And we can then reassign those to students and put them on their student ID card so that they can go to the cafeteria and get a hot meal. And so we can support students not only through canned foods and other items like that, but also just giving them a hot meal. So just, that's a, a really great thing that, that we have planned for this fall. Dr. King mentioned technology and I'm so grateful to her because she has been able through her area to help locate funding, to support the purchase of laptops and hotspots to our students. Those requests come through the Dean of Students office. So I wanted to tell her today that reading those requests each day, and I, I get probably on average five requests a day for either a hotspot or a laptop. The things that I read each day, how the students request those, they're so meaningful. A student will say, I need that hotspot because I'm driving to campus or I'm driving to Panera Bread and I'm sitting in the parking lot and I'm doing my work there. Can I please have a hotspot? Of course, let's get you set up with that. And when I submitted my presentation a couple of weeks ago, these were the accurate numbers. We've probably got about 50 laptops and 50 hotspots left at this point. So we'll take those back in at the end of term, re-image the computers and get them ready for summer and then fall. I never thought, being the Dean of Students, I'd be working with money. And so that, it gives me a little bit of heartburn still, but in the last year, had we not had some emergency funding sources, our students would be much worse off. As you know, we, we receive federal cares money, which we disperse to students. Students are already asking about the forthcoming federal cares money and when it will be dispersed. I know we're trying to come up with a plan and waiting for eligibility guidelines for that. So that's been very helpful to our students. But also the Buccaneer Student Crisis Fund, which Dr. Sherlin mentioned. We'd actually created that fund just prior to the pandemic in November of 2019. We already knew that students sometimes just had minor expenses that would derail their academic career. They had a flat tire, their car needed repair. Suddenly they couldn't make it to campus. They couldn't do their classes. And if we just had a little bit of money to extend to them, it would make all the difference. Thank goodness, we had a little bit of money to start the spring term out with. But then through private donations and our Day of Giving campaign, we were able to raise over $100,000, which we spent the rest of the year distributing to students. Got a little bit of money left in the fund right now, but I would encourage you for the Day of Giving that's coming up in April. Please, if you find it in your heart to support this cause, it, it is money well, well dispersed to our students. The average award is $500 and it makes such an impact. Just the stories that I still hear from students, the requests I get. You know, students who go into isolation, who go into quarantine, they can't work for two or three weeks. And our students are really good about budgeting. But if you suddenly miss three weeks of work, you're hurting. And so it's come into play with those types of situations and with students not able to pay their utilities or needing their car repaired. My office now is overseeing the tuition micro grants and the Bucks for Books scholarships. So we're able to help students with those needs as well when they meet the eligibility guidelines. So some good work going on, lots of record keeping. Mental health services on campus have been well-used over the last year. And these are our three primary providers on campus, the Counseling Center, University Health Center and the Behavioral Health and Wellness Clinic. Each of those serve the students through either care, through counseling sessions, psychiatry appointments or educational assessments. So one thing is with the Counseling Center offering sessions through Zoom, we found that some students actually like Zoom better than they would an in-person appointment. As you know, sometimes there's stigma involved with accessing mental health services. As you know, sometimes there's stigma involved with accessing mental health services. So physically going to a Counseling Center side and walking through the door can be hard for students who maybe aren't uncomfortable with that. What I've heard from some of the counselors is that students are connecting and they're in their car or they're in their bedroom, and they're somewhere private where they feel like their confidentiality is even more protected than it would be otherwise. So I think that even when we come back to in-person sessions, we're going to still allow students to request Zoom sessions. So that's something that's been very positive. We have seen a decrease in the year. There's a few things, in usage, there's a few things I can attribute that to, and I'll get to that slide in just a second. But, you know, overall, we've had a very positive response from students continuing to use the Counseling Center. And this slide just, you know, shows that most students will have a positive response to counseling. I know Dr. Jones said, when you look at the responses, they're in the 70s percentiles. Those students are still working through whatever issue it is with the counselor. University Health Center, of course, they provide behavioral health as well. They've seen a smaller decrease in usage on campus, but they're still moving forward with their services. Why are we seeing a decrease? Residential density in large part. We have fewer students on campus, so they're at home, they're connecting to home providers, providers in their community. There's just not the population here on campus that are walking or connecting to the Counseling Center. Zoom fatigue, of course, is also an issue, and that's an issue not only with mental health services, but with our engagement opportunities on campus. Forging ahead, we've been very resilient, and our students have been very resilient. We know that we have provided access to services, but we want to continue to refine how we do that, do it better. We do good, but we can always do better. And so many of these things we will retain, but we do want to get back on ground and move forward with services as we did in prior pandemic times. Thank you for bearing with me through a longer presentation. And if you have any questions, I'm glad to try to answer those. Yes?
Are all the givings 501Cs or some not 501Cs?
All the donations.
Yeah, like the bucks, the bucks for bucks. Is that a 501C or is that not?
Yeah, I think that they are all 501Cs. I can confirm that, though.
If I could follow up.
Yes.
Trustee DeCarlo, the Bucks Help Bucks campaign is all under the umbrella of the ETSU Foundation.
Okay.
So any contributions that individuals make go through the ETSU Foundation. As Dean Byrd mentioned, we have been able to push hundreds of thousands of dollars out to students with critical financial needs. Some of it helped them make a rent payment, some of it helped them cover a medical bill. So the resources that you've seen, some of that we began prior to the pandemic, but our Day of Giving campaign in the spring of '20, those funds were all directed towards getting resources to our students who need help.
Questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sherlin and Byrd. It doesn't seem like enough to say thank you to you and the staff and the rest of the faculty. For those of you that are watching online that are alum, I hope you're as proud of your university as the group sitting here at this table today. If you're a parent, you need to know, and you have just learned if you had any doubt, that your children are being cared for in a very special way as though they were family by a very caring group of people.
Yes.
Other comments from our trustees?
The group of students that did the virtual studies, that was just amazing. It was obvious. It was just heartfelt to see them be engaged, but how much they appreciated the work that Dr. Johnson's team was doing with them. That was wonderful. Really, just heartfelt for me, for all of us, I'm sure.
Thank you, yes. The next item is key performance indicators and Report on Committee 125, version two, update. Dr. Nolan and then Dr. Hough.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to walk through a series of slides that touch upon what I think will be the most significant strategic planning effort that this board and this campus will have been engaged in in decades. Many of you were part of the work of the Committee for 125, Chapter One. In fact, Chairman Niesmeyer was a member of that body, as was trustee Dorothy Grisham. That group worked within the mission that was established by our founding president, Sidney Gilbert, to improve the quality of life for the people of our region. And that group, which began their work in 2012, really shaped a vision for this institution that framed a lot of the work that we've been engaged in in the decade that just came to a close. And that was a group that outlined a vision for this institution to be a beacon of hope of social and cultural education, but really, an institution that was focused on a stewardship of place. It was a body that set some strategic goals and horizons for accomplishing those goals. And I've shared this with you before. I know some of you are sitting there thinking, well, these are the same slides you gave us the last time you talked about this. Some of them are, but by design, because I want to remind this board and the campus of the vision that was set. It was a vision that came from the bottom up, not the top down, and some of the performance horizons that were established. Within a five-year timeframe, we established a goal for ourselves to transform our business and finance systems. We did that, creating a decentralized budget process. We created a goal to completely restructure institutional advancement, which we've done, putting embedded advancement officers in every college. We created a goal to move from 130-some logos to one identified brand. We looked at restructuring university administration operations and planning, to restructure student affairs, scholarships, and financial aid, and to put in place outreach on public and private partnerships. Every single one of these things we accomplished in the first five years. So then on the tenure horizon, new investments in signature programs. You saw two of them today in occupational therapy and orthotics and orthotics. You're sitting in this building that was part of a strategic dream at that time. We said we wanted to launch a more-than-100-million-dollar capital campaign. We're three-quarters of the way home right now on our $125 million capital campaign. We said we wanted to complete, if not meet, the objectives of Complete College Tennessee. Last year, we led the state in performance. This year, we're number two. And then we outlined a vision that we wanted to enhance the physical infrastructure of the campus. And if you walk across the campus today and compare it to pictures in 2012, it is a very different institution. So the things that we set out to do in 2012, we've done most of them. But as a reminder, the landscape is very different now than it was in 2012. The Board of Trustees didn't exist in '12. So as we embark upon a new planning process, how do we incorporate and integrate the board into that activity? In '12, we hadn't heard about a demographic cliff, and I can assure you, the competition for freshmen is much more pronounced now than it was then. We've heard today about online innovations, Zoom. I didn't even know what Zoom was in '12. I thought it was something that my camera did. But that innovation in the curricula and in the classroom is now something that is going to stay with us to come. We're concerned about affordability and student debt. You just heard a presentation where the student use of the food pantry has increased 30% during the pandemic, and we've pushed more than $200,000 into families of students who are struggling to meet basic needs. There's great concern from the public and a lack of trust in higher education. I'll speak later about some of the issues swirling around this institution that have created a lack of trust in the university, but that's across the country as people begin to question institutions. Our staffing's different. We had more than 100 people retire from this institution in the past year. And how do we look at staffing in a different way? And then I'm going to talk at length about COVID. So these are some of the things that are in front of us, but we're getting ready to embark on where we want to be by the end of the decade. We're a different institution today than we were in '12, and we're going to be a different institution in '30 than we are today. But we cannot get there by happenstance. We have to get there through diligent and focused strategic planning. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hoff, who's going to walk you through a proposal for how we feel this process should be structured.
Dr. Nolan, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to walk you through what we've put together. You'll recognize this slide, and that's because it's the slide that was used when we presented the 2016-26 Strategic Plan to you several years ago that you approved. I want to draw your attention to the column on the far right. That's where we are right now. We're going to close the loop on this thing. It's what you do after five years. It's what you do when you finish the mission. And that's what we've done. The president has presented to you a little bit about the things that we've done, and you've been present for many of them, both as board members and community affiliates. Things like this building that we're in today were strategies and tactics that were developed from that original 125 report. And you can see that the column on the far left references that report because that was the foundation for the 2016-26 Strategic Plan. Now, I want to talk to you a little bit about why it's time and how the key performance indicators factor into how it is we structure strategic planning. At the time that we formed this strategic plan in 2016, enrollment was one of the biggest challenges, and it was also one of the best opportunities we had in front of us. But that was because student success was the focus of the day. The drive to 55 was driving things across the state of Tennessee. What we all were trying to protect against was the demographic cliff that Dr. Nolan mentioned. And while enrollment on this screen might look like it's one of the few things that we didn't hit after the period of 125.1, I would actually say that we did. A lot of times, I present information to you based on a quarter or a year of effort as opposed to the reality of the situation. And the reality is, nationwide, according to the National Student Clearinghouse, enrollment fell 11% from 2011 to 2019. College enrollment fell 11%. At ETSU, it only fell six. We beat the market. Anytime you beat the market, you're going to get investment. Not only did we beat the market, and we got investment, as you can see from the total annual giving, but we also got it from student success. The highest graduation retention rates in the history of the university were halfway to our goal at the halfway point of our plan. I don't think that anybody could look back on the period at ETSU since 2011 and say that we didn't accomplish our mission. What we demonstrated is that we're a group of people, when aligned in vision, can achieve great things. And I look forward to the things that we're going to try to achieve together over the next five years. What did we do to get ready for this? Dr. Nolan just woke up one day and came down to my office and said, Mike, I don't know. Let's do a 125. What do you think? No, we started to ask people how they felt about where we were. We started to take a view, a long and wide view of the current context around higher education. We consulted national consultants at EAB. We did a strategic marketing review. We found out that our place in the marketplace is higher now than it's ever been. 70% of the people polled compared our product to be as good or better to the University of Tennessee, Clemson, and Appalachian State. We're one of the best things this region's ever had. There's not enough people give us a chance, yet. The thing that also comes into play is equity and inclusion, the advising task force, program development, and revitalization. Every meeting that we've had, you've seen program proposals, either to modify existing programs or to add programs or minors or other nuances to the academic portfolio. There's more changes on the horizon, and I want to thank our interim leaders for continuing to push the institution forward. We did surveys, asked students how they felt. 80% of the students said that they thought that we had their best interests in mind. Now, I don't know about the people who do business in here, but if you let me ask about 16,000 people, which is about how many surveys we got back over the last year, I'm going to be hard-pressed to get 80% of them to agree on anything right now. But we got 80% of them to agree that we have their best interests at heart. That means our community is ready to work with us. All of these things are building the stage for why it's time to do 125.2. We did focus groups. And although we found out great information, the president and I also learned a lot about technology, mainly about new video games that we had never heard of. We come from a little bit different generation, but Atari and Sega were not that different from each other, not like Among Us and Fortnite are today. But what that means is that there's an online component that we haven't considered yet. There are characteristics of the educational delivery model that have to be incorporated into the next vision of this institution. We're also completing a retrospective and discovery report, and we'll have that ready for the campus next month, and we're going to celebrate a lot. We're going to find, just like you would any other time that you were grounded as a teenager or couldn't participate after doing homework in college, what are you going to do? You're going to celebrate. You're going to celebrate everything there is, and we're going to get together a lot this year to celebrate this institution. The committee will be named later this month. It'll have national leaders, it'll have regional leaders, it'll have esteemed members of boards such as yourselves. And the big thing about this is, it's designed to get us to look past our current state. I'm going to say something a couple of times in this presentation. This is not the process of having a one-sentence vision statement. This is a process of defining and outlining the characteristics of a university that does not exist yet. The institution that you're a part of and helping lead today did not exist in 2011. It does now. Why? Because a group of people like this committee came together and said it could. And then we're going to set about the work of doing it. That's what the major committee's going to do. What are the task forces going to do? Laser-like focus on their areas: academics, ETSU health, student success, and experience, research, and scholarship, and sustainability. The financial model of higher education, period, higher education, period, is flawed. The financial model for public higher education is also flawed. We're going to have to become more resourceful. I know that we've all told you this, including Dr. Nolan, at several meetings. The way that we go about our business financially is going to be different, and we've got to build structures around that. There's going to be senior academic leaders involved in each task force with 12 to 15 members, and those visions are not just as a component of the larger vision. If you go back and look at the original work for 125.1, the goals that each of those task forces set are items we achieved as well. It's not just what comes out of the major committee, but it's the components around it that make a whole institution. February and March, we're going to finalize the calendar. We'll have a website to present information and collect engagement, and we're going to identify the members of the task forces. Finally, the president will start to present that retrospective, which will get people in the mood to celebrate. When you tell people how good of a job they did, what do they like to do? Tell other people how good of a job they did. That's what we're going to do. Word of mouth is going to get people excited about this process. April is the big month. It's when we're going to go do a whole lot of listening. We're going to ask people how they think about what should happen to the next phase of higher education. And once we know that, we're going to engage with employers and alumni to figure out what they think is going to make us great. May to June, we'll provide an update to you. Task forces are going to start to provide their reports, and then the committee will develop a SWAT, and we're going to use all that to finalize a draft unified vision. I want to remind you again, this is not going to be one sentence. This is a packet of information that outlines the characteristics of a new university. July and August, hopefully, we'll have a new provost installed. I wish I could say hopefully that provost would be Dr. Bishop, but we all know that that won't be true. So whoever comes in second will be fine. We'll also utilize presidential and other communications to let the campus know how things are going and get them really excited for the fall. This is an opportunity to get people focused outside of the grunt work of COVID and inside to the institution and the great work of expanding minds and opportunities. September, October, and November, what are we going to do? We're going to give people one more bite at the apple. We're going to let the president do his thing and tell everybody how great it is and do a little bit of magic like Steve Jobs used to do and get them convinced it's true. Then we'll bring it to you when it's ready for packaging. I just want to summarize by letting you know that the work of 125.1 was intentional. You know, the great thing about getting to lead planning efforts is, what happens is a lot of times, you get the opportunity to ask questions people don't normally get to ask, because I'm not bound by financial constraints or operational paradigms or policies. Part of the reason you do planning is to figure out what kind of those things you need to change to make life happen. And if you look at the things that we changed to get the Millennium Center, to make this building happen, to create programs and opportunities for students, we did all that, and we did it for the purpose of benefiting the people in the region. And that's the last thing that I want to say, is that the point of nonprofit public planning is to derive public value. It's to be able to tell your story. And 125.2 is going to give us an opportunity to tell a story for the next decade or next 20 years about this institution, and I'm excited that you'll all be a part of it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could conclude, I want to loop this process now back into the board. As you saw Dr. Hoff mention, we'll bring an update to this board in April. Much of this work will frame the activity of our board retreat that we're going to query you on for potential dates in July. It'll come back before the board again in the fall, and then in November, this board would take action on the work that occurs through this process.
would take action on the work that occurs through this process. When we did this before, we did not have a board. Our board was in Nashville. As we move through this process now, our goal is to conduct all this field reconnaissance and bring this back to you so that it helps inform your vision for this university moving forward by the end of the decade. So we wanted to give you an update just to ensure this was consistent with the direction you wanted us to take, because from here, we will begin this work in earnest. Be happy to take any questions, and I'll flip all the hard ones to Dr. Hoff. Who already left the stage?
It's Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're good? Okay. Thanks, Mike, and thanks, Dr. Nolan. Next, I'd like to invite Dr. Wykoff up to get a spotlight to what's happening in college of public health.
Can you all hear me okay with the mask on? It's a real honor for me to be here with you today and give you an update on the College of Public Health. I've been the dean of the college now for almost 15 years, and I can say with incredible confidence that virtually everybody here in this room, online, and in the auditorium has been an essential part of our success. And so on behalf of the entire college, I'd like this presentation to be a way of my saying thank you to everyone for what you've done. We have 84 faculty and staff, 807 students in 13 degree programs, and we've been growing and doing pretty well. And every semester, I give an update to the faculty. And I always build the update, as Mike Hoff would say, around our strategic vision, because that's what we want to accomplish. So what I want to do today very quickly is tell you what our strategic vision is, why we developed it, why we think we can achieve it, and then spend a little bit of time on the outcomes that we've seen and future steps, and then, of course, answer any questions that you might have. So the strategic vision for the College of Public Health is that we want to be the school of choice for students who want an exceptional educational experience in a world-class environment. And we mean this to be a very competitive and aggressive vision statement. There's four things about it that I always highlight. First and foremost, it is about students. We are here for students. We do not exist, obviously, if we don't have a good student body. Secondly, it's about school of choice. We are competitive. We realize we have to be aggressive. We have to market our programs and get students to come to us, because otherwise, we don't have this college of public health. Exceptional educational experience is important because it's not just an exceptional education. It is the entire experience that we're responsible for. So from the time someone applies to the time they become an alum, we want to make sure that their experience with ETSU is as good as it can be. And I will say, as a parent of four kids who are either at ETSU or have graduated from this institution, I know that their students are going to get an exceptional educational experience. For us, world-class environment has three meanings. One, this region that we live in. Two, what we produce in terms of scholarship for our professions. And three, most importantly, how we treat each other. So that is our vision statement. Why do we have such an aggressive vision? And really, it relates to our history. ETSU has been involved in health for a long time. It had the first minor in health in the 1930s, the first degree program in the 1950s. We have the oldest EHAC Environmental Health Program in the country. But we weren't accredited as a college of public health until 2009, just over a decade ago. So when we were accredited, by definition, we were the newest school of public health in the country. There were only 43 colleges of public health at the time. We were the first one in Tennessee and the first one in central Appalachia. We were the newest. We were also the smallest. In terms of budget, our budget was less than 2% of what Johns Hopkins' budget was at the time we were accredited. So we were the newest, the smallest. We were also one of the few schools that wasn't at a state flagship institution or a large private university. In fact, these are the ones in red that are ranked in the top 100, top 200, top 250. So we were at one of the lesser-known institutions as well. And then in 2011, just a decade ago, we were eligible for the first time to be ranked by U.S. News &amp; World Report. For public health, these rankings are done by the other deans. We're asked, "How good is this other school?" And just a decade ago, we were one of only four schools whose score was so low, we weren't ranked at all.
Now look at that.
So we were the newest, the smallest, the least well-known, and one of four least well-regarded schools in the country. We had our work cut out for us. We had to be somewhat aggressive. But unfortunately, there were two headwinds that we didn't anticipate that we now understand. The first was that there were increasing number of schools and programs, and the second was the demographic cliff that Dr. Nolan mentioned. Increasing schools and programs, these are all the schools, accredited schools and programs in Tennessee and the seven surrounding states. I'm now going to show in red those that have been accredited since we were just 11 years ago, and you get an idea of how competitive this environment has become. In terms of the demographic cliff, you all know that the number of high school graduates is going down rapidly. Our challenge is that it's going down more rapidly in this region than in other parts of the country. And the reason I say that is if you look at the average age of the eight counties of Northeast Tennessee where 80% of our undergraduates come from, the average age is 43.6. You look at the eight most populous counties in Tennessee where half of Tennessee's population is, it's almost eight years less. Those counties are going to get to the demographic cliff eight years after we will. They're actually younger than the nation as a whole. So we are five to six years older than the nation as a whole. Those eight counties are less. The reason I mention those eight counties is because eight of our nine major competitors are in those counties. So if we're going to be successful at competing for students, we have got to figure out a way of competing directly in these other counties and with these other institutions. So our challenge was, 10 years ago, how do we compete against 42 bigger, longer-serving, more prestigious, well-recognized schools, dozens of upcoming places, in the face of a decreasing undergraduate base? And that's why we developed this vision statement. We realized that we had to compete with Harvard and Hopkins and Yale and Columbia and Emory and Tulane, all the other schools out there. We had to figure out a way of being successful, or else we weren't going to survive. Now, just having a vision statement doesn't really help you that much unless people believe you can achieve it. Because if I said I want to be the number-one school of public health in the country, none of you would believe it, none of my faculty would believe it, no one would support us. So we developed a way that we think of how we achieve our vision. And it's based on something that I call the hotel analogy. And the idea is that schools of public health are like hotels, all right? The biggest schools are like your five-star hotels, gold elevators, doormen in uniforms and so on, more than you could possibly use in any one stay, but at a price, all right? Mid-sized schools are like conference hotels, nice location, good facilities. And your small schools of public health are like motels, all right? Clean sheets, nice towels, soap and plastic containers, minimum accreditation standards. But no matter how well you run a Motel 6, it's still a Motel 6. We had to figure out a way to be small but world-class. And in the hospitality industry, there are three ways that they can do that. The first, of course, is a bed and breakfast, defined by the relationships that exist. There are things like Barefoot Cruise and Everest Base Camp, which provide their participants something that they can't get anywhere else, and then your destinations, your safari lodges and so on. We looked at all of them, and we realized there are ways that they compete. They can be small but world-class. And of these ways, the last two are most important for us. We have to focus on the complete experience from the time someone applies to the time they graduate, and we have to have a laser-like focus on excellence. Now, I'm not going to go into details of the steps we've taken, other than to say we have, we're working now on our third strategic plan. We have six core areas, 10 goals, 70 metrics. This is a comprehensive plan. I'm not going to go into details, because what you should care about, and I know you do, is whether we're seeing results. Are we changing things? So in terms of meeting our goal of being a school of choice, I'm pleased to tell you that in the years since we've been accredited, our enrollment has more than doubled. We're growing at 6.5% a year, annualized, year over year. This last fall, despite everything that's been going on, we have our largest enrollment that we have ever had, the largest number of doc students, the largest number of master's students, the largest number of MDMPH students, the largest number of Coverdale Fellows, that's returning Peace Corps volunteers, and the second-largest number of undergraduates that we've ever had. This spring, we're up 11% over last spring, and perhaps the most stunning statistics of the next three. As of January 28th, our number of master's applications is up over a third from last year when we had a record enrollment. Our number of doc applications is up 43% over last year when we had a record enrollment. And our number of undergraduates is up over 50% in one year alone. So we think we're doing reasonably well. In the last eight years, we've had an applicant from every state except one and 54 foreign countries. But what I really want you to think about is this. Undergraduate, for this fall, we've had applicants from 17 states. In the last four years, we've had applicants from 29 states. Even though 80% of our ETSU undergrads come from this region, we're starting to have a national footprint. I was really proud. I was going to show you this slide to show you that even within Tennessee, we've increased from 38 to 50 counties in the last three years. And then last night, I got this year's numbers, and we're up to 61 counties. So we're starting to reach, have a better impact across the country, around the world, and across the state. In terms of exceptional educational experience, I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail, other than to say we have developed a mechanism by which we reward faculty for quality teaching. We've developed new degree programs specifically focused on the job market, health data analytics, health management, and so on. We've developed new scholarships. But the thing that I'm most proud of is what we call our success metrics. Every year, when our students graduate, we do an exit survey, and one of the questions we ask them is, "Would you recommend the college to others?" When they've been in the workforce for a year to two, we ask them how satisfied you were, and we survey employers. And you can see the numbers there, and we're solidly in the mid to upper 90s. And I'm pleased to say that this year, for the two that we have updates on, we're actually ahead of our last few-year average. Half of our undergrads go on to the workforce, half go into further education. I just want to highlight this one. For our Department of Health Sciences, in the past four years, almost one-fifth of their graduates are now in medical school. One-fifth are in graduate school, and a further fifth are either in PA or pharmacy school. So we feel like we can provide an exceptional educational experience. Just as my children got, so do my students. In terms of world-class environment, as I say, there are three meanings. One is this region. We realized from the beginning, if all we are is a small Johns Hopkins, we will always lose, because Hopkins can be Hopkins better than we can. Harvard can be Harvard. But we have something they don't have, which is the Appalachian Highlands, and we have to market that as a strength, and we do. Second way we talk about world-class environment is our research productivity. And with the support of many of you in this room, we have now surpassed $5 million a year in external spending. I say if we were a small business, growing at 6.5% a year and bringing in $5 million of external funding, we may be get our picture on the Business Journal from time to time. So I think we're reasonably proud of that. We have expertise in things that really matter to this region: addiction science, women's health, and rural health, as well as other areas. But world-class environment for us means something else, and that is how we treat each other. And so we now have new questions on our surveys. We ask students, "How satisfied are you with faculty availability, faculty responsiveness, and your advising experience?" And again, our numbers are very strong here. Fortunately, we're also starting to get some national recognition. We've been selected as a Peace Corps prep program and a Coverdale Fellows program for returning Peace Corps volunteers. Project Earth in the Niesswanger Village won the 2017 Delta Omega Award for the most innovative public health curriculum in the country. We've become only the second school to win that award twice. We won the 2018 Public Health Service Award of Excellence. And perhaps most importantly, where we were unranked by U.S. News &amp; World Report, 2019 is the most recent one. Between 2011 and 2019, no school in the country had a greater increase in score than we did, and we're now in the top third of all schools and programs in the country. There are things we want to accomplish in the coming year. Number one thing for me is the transition to the Lamb Hall. We're going to have a wonderful, fabulous educational facility for our students. This is going to be a world-class learning chance for them, both inside and out. It's a wonderful, it's magnificent. It's what our students need and deserve. The problem is, it's going to take two years to get it, so I've got to worry about how I maintain motivation and engagement for all of these students over those next two years, and faculty and staff as well. But it's a good, as Dr. Nolan often says, it's a good problem to have. I want to work on enrollment. These are issues that not just affect the college. I think there's some real good opportunities for ETSU to focus on first-time students, non-traditional students, and pre-health-focused students. I think we can expand our national footprint by recruiting them. I want to increase our visibility with the web, strategic marketing, and especially news. I think we have the opportunity to get some of our news stories onto the national platform in a way we haven't historically. I want to grow our research productivity, and I'm challenged as to how to do that. And of course, we want to grow through philanthropy and partnerships. From the beginning, we knew we were a small school, and we knew that could either be a strength or a weakness. But I want to close by quoting the great philosopher Paul McCartney. When they asked him about the early years of the Beatles, he said, "You know, we just wanted to be a really good little band." And that's been our motivation. We just want to be a really good little school of public health. And we know we can do it, with a little help from our friends. So I'm going to close by the way I began, by thanking the faculty and staff who've made all this possible, but especially thanking all of you in front of me and behind me and on the other side of the road who've made all of this possible. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anyone?
I don't have any questions, but Mrs. Janet, as an alum of that program with a degree in Healthcare Administration from 1986 is my undergraduate degree, I am so proud, Dr. Wykoff, of how you have led this program, and it is absolutely, that degree, that undergraduate degree I received and the education I received set me up for where I am today, hands down. And I don't know where the quote came from, it's not mine, but the quality of the university is not the quality of student admitted, it's the quality of student when they graduate. And you are proving that in your numbers. So thank you all for the hard work. It's very impressive.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I'd be hard-pressed to add anything to that.
That's right.
Thank you. Amazing journey. Thank you for your leadership.
Well, thank you for your support.
Yes. Yeah. Here goes.
You ready? All right. With that, it's time for the President's Report. Dr. Nolan.
Members of the board, it is almost impossible to follow Dr. Wykoff. For those of you who have been on the board for a number of years, you recall that one of the things we attempted to do early on was to provide the opportunity for board members to interact with our faculty, our staff, our students, and our leadership in classroom, in lab, and in settings all across the institution. Well, because of COVID, we've not been able to do that for a while. But I thought, I need to get you back in the cycle of hearing from leaders on campus. And now you see why. You see why, once COVID passes, we're so excited about having the opportunity to get you back into connection and engagement with this institution, because there's wonderful things happening all across the campus. Dr. Wykoff, I've heard the plug there on the building in two years. We'll see what we can do to make it move a little bit quicker, but it is a good problem to have a more than $23 million renovation to Lamb Hall, a portion of which is supported by philanthropic elements, some of which has been supported by members of this board. So for that, I thank you. Also have to admit, I never thought I would stand before Board of Trustees in February and say, "We have a football game tomorrow." But this picture here that's on the slide is intentional, because tomorrow, we will kick off the '21 season as we play the first game of the year at Green Stadium. My presentation is going to talk about the following elements. I'm going to give an update on enrollment, and talk some about student success budgets, and I'm going to move through some elements and close with a little bit on COVID. But I want to leave this picture of Sidney Gilbert up in front of you, as I provide a little bit of comment on some of the things that are happening across the region as it relates to this institution that have unfolded in the past few days. President Gilbert faced significant hurdles as he launched this institution. Hurdles related to where we place buildings, how we pay the light bills, how we create how we pay the light bills, how we create programs, how we develop operational structures. And on many days, I'll go back and read the history books of challenges that have faced this institution. But the challenges that are in front of the institution at the current moment, I anticipate, in the future, folks will look back at this moment in history. And as I look at this moment, this has been a difficult and trying year for our campus, for our region, and for our nation, as a global pandemic has upended our lives, claimed the lives of loved ones, and disrupted our economy. Despite the promise of vaccines, pronounced challenges and uncertainties due to COVID remain in front of our community. Over the past year, we've also witnessed the once peaceful streets of communities across our nation becoming the scenes of protests, protest against inequity, violence, and hatred, protests which emerged with strident cries for social justice. Our nation is struggling to address these issues collectively, just as we all are at an individual level. I can't pretend to fully understand the life experiences that many of our students have faced. I understand and respect that we're all searching for ways to bring healing and attention to these issues. However, I fear that we may have failed as a society to find common ground and education for discussion and dialogue. We each bring our individual life experiences to the table, and while my life experience may be different than yours, the fabric of our nation's flag is part of a quilt that ties us all together as a community. We struggle daily to make sense of some things that sometimes are truly senseless. During the during these tumultuous times, I've watched our university's quilt become frayed. We've experienced hurt, and we felt pain, a pain that has touched every student, faculty, and staff member at ETSU. Our student athletes have been on this campus throughout the past year. As teammates, they've shared a great deal with one another. As teammates, they've experienced pain and joy together, and they've looked for ways to express themselves. Earlier this week at an athletic event, a group of students kneeled during the National Anthem, something that has repeatedly occurred on other college campuses across the nation. By no means do I believe that any of our students intended for their actions to be disrespectful to our flag, our veterans, service members, or their family. However, I recognize the hurt, the pain, and the emotion that has been evidenced across this region. My father served in the Korean conflict, and other members of my family have served, were injured, or gave their lives in service to our nation and to our flag. I've heard from many of them over the past few days, as events have unfolded here at ETSU, and know that those events and actions do not reflect our values. As I reflect on the events that have played out so publicly here at ETSU, I'm reminded of the important need for people to express themselves in their own ways. We stridently support and uphold the rights of our students to express their beliefs. But we all have to recognize that we're representatives of this university. Every day when I get out of bed and put on my uniform, I step out of that house, not as myself, but as a representative of this university. My every action, word, and deed reflects on this campus and on this Board of Trustees. The same can be said for our coaches and for our student athletes. When they put on the blue and gold of their uniforms, they not only represent their teammates, they carry the hopes and dreams and aspirations of this region. When you put on a uniform, you take on a unique responsibility. And I know that the actions of the past few days have caused tension and strife and emotion within our community. I also know that we've had a lot of purposeful and intentional conversations regarding social justice and equity and structural disparities in our region. Those conversations are healthy and healing, and I know that they're going to plant seeds that will allow roots to grow for change. I was taught as a young man when I went to school on Sunday, that suffering emerges perseverance, from perseverance produces character, and character creates hope. I was also taught to bless those who persecute you, and to look with grace upon those who disagree with you. Grace, hope, and perseverance. As you've heard today, those words, those themes, those values have defined this campus, not only over the past year, but for years. And I know we're going to strive intensely in the weeks and months and years to come, to work through the debate that is front and center over the past few days. We all recognize that exercising our individual liberties comes with a price, and that price is understanding and tolerance, tolerance of viewpoints that we may not always agree with. If our university is truly a marketplace of ideas, then all perspectives must be offered. That diversity of perspective, a diversity of ideas, is what makes this a beautiful university. This is a campus that was built on grounds adjacent to the VA, and our mission, as President Gilbert shows, has been and will always be, to serve this region. I reaffirm our institutional commitment to that mission, and stand ready to work with the campus and the board to move forward. It's my sincere hope that the image of our students expressing their beliefs on the field of play gives us an opportunity to come together to heal, to have dialogue, and to replace strife with unity. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I know the volume of feedback that you have received over the course of the past week regarding issues that have unfolded. During times of difficulty, character steps forward. And what you've seen at this board meeting is during the difficult period of COVID, the character of this institution stepped forward. It stepped forward to provide individuals with financial need, to meet those needs. It provided food for families who could not put food on the table. We persevered. And I know that the past week has been difficult, and it's caused many people to question their faith and belief in this university. But I'm proud to be a part of this university, and I know that we will come together as a region to focus back on that mission. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move through another series of slides, and then at the conclusion of my comments, would be open to address any questions or comments from the board, if that's okay with you and the other members of the board. Okay, so let's switch gears a little bit. This is a picture from a number of years ago. I can't wait for scenes like this to come back on campus. As a reminder of how long ago this was, the last time we had a real homecoming on campus with people, there's a young man in the middle of the screen with a blue shirt on and a beard, that's my nephew, Ben Ramsey. Ben graduated from this university. Where is he now? He's working in the COVID ward at Ballad. That's what many of these individuals are doing, because it's been that long since we had events on campus. As Dr. Hoff and Dr. Wykoff noted, our enrollment looks a little bit different than it did before, but it does across state. Everyone has fewer of those images on their campus, because enrollment has declined, particularly among the community college sector. I provided these charts to you at the last board meeting. I'm showing them to you again at this meeting to give you a sense of context. Our enrollment is down at the university, but minus Knoxville, it's down everywhere else. And in the community college sector, you're seeing declines at some institutions in excess of twenty percent. Roll up, here's our enrollment for the fall, down four-fifty-eight. That was within our budget parameters, and the budget decisions that we made in the summer allowed us to move through this academic year without the financial disruption that you saw at other universities in the country. And here's our enrollment for the spring, once again, down over where it was before, but remaining within our budget parameters. You've heard some about applications, and I want to give you a little bit of up-to-date information on where we are with respect to applications for the university. Last year was a banner year in terms of applications, not a banner year in terms of yield because of COVID. But you see, we're still up six hundred students over where we were in the fall of nineteen. Our accepted numbers are up significantly. Our transfer numbers are also up year over year. But the context through which those numbers are generated is very uncertain. Our parents have significant financial concerns about how they're going to pay for college in the fall, because COVID has disrupted our economy. Our kids are burnt out. My son gets up every morning at seven-fifty. He does this quick. He eats, he gets ready, and by eight o'clock, he starts class on Zoom. And there are a lot of nights when I come home from work, well past dark, and Jackson's still in front of the computer doing his homework. My son's in the tenth grade. And you see the same thing for students all across this region. So they're tired academically. They're uncertain about what the fall is going to hold. And then the things that they've relied upon to support them can't support them, because they're not in schools, they can't meet with the counselors. We can't get into schools and do the outreach that we typically do. By this time of the year, I would have been in thirty high schools all across this region handing out scholarships. I've not been in a single high school this fall. So the numbers and the work that we're doing, and the growth that we're experiencing, is within a very uncertain landscape. So we've upped our marketing, we've upped our outreach, we've put in place free application, and we've pushed, and we've pushed, and we've pushed. We've sent orientation gift boxes that include stickers and posters and T-shirts to students, saying, we welcome you to the university. You've heard a lot today, we don't do a good job of telling our story. We're making a difference with respect to incoming students. We're marketing in ways that this institution has not marketed in a long time, and we're also doing things in a one-on-one way. So here are examples of e-marketing materials that are being directed to students. And here are more examples. But this one's my favorite, because every single student who's accepted to East Tennessee State University receives a handwritten note from a fellow student welcoming them to the institution. Every single student who has received a high-end academic scholarship at the institution, from president on down, provost, deans, et cetera, is receiving a personal call from senior-level administrators encouraging them to enroll at the institution and take that scholarship. And I know Dr. Green spent the bulk of his last Friday calling students and congratulating them on their accomplishments. I'm still a little behind on my list, but I'm going to catch up hopefully after the board meeting. So let's shift to student success. Dr. Hoff mentioned it. I'll remind you all, highest graduating rate, highest graduation rate in the history of the university. Our rate compared to other institutions is passing peers. And our rate for African-American students, Hispanic students, and Pell students is above the statewide average. A quick update on budget. Now, the lights that were burning here aren't helping with budget, but as many of you all know, my favorite time of the year is when we turn these lights on on campus. Dr. Foley and others joined us this year, and I wasn't going to let COVID take the holiday lights away from this university. So that was a picture taken this past holiday season. You've seen this slide before. It's a reminder, we moved into this fall with an eight-point-two-million-dollar budget gap that we needed to fill. A lot of it was because of enrollment declines, other elements were because of OPEC liability, COVID, et cetera. Central administration took a larger cut than the campus as a whole, a five-point-three percent across the board cut for administrative units, a four-point-three percent cut for academic units. We tightened up, and we were more efficient. We put in place purchasing restrictions and travel restrictions. We also put in place a voluntary retirement program. A hundred and nine individuals took advantage of that opportunity, and we estimate our potential long-term savings will be three-point-nine million dollars. You've seen some of this material this morning with Dr. King's presentation, but I just want to touch on it again. Revenues across the campus are down three percent. Pharmacy revenues are down more than ten percent because of the small freshman class in the Gattin College of Pharmacy. Our ENG revenues are down, our auxiliary revenues are down twenty-seven percent. We made a decision to put people first and safety first. And as I shared with the executive committee the day we were making the decisions, never in my career did I throw ten million dollars out the window. But that's what we did when we made the decision to move to single units in the residence halls. But we did so in the interest of safety, and that's why our COVID numbers look different than COVID numbers for other institutions in the state. So we've got a hole to dig out of, but we'll dig out of it through a plan. We're in solid shape. As Dr. King mentioned today, our composite financial index is still right where it needs to be, and we're in better shape than many of the other public universities in the state of Tennessee. So why are we in that position? First and foremost, because we have a state, a general assembly, and a governor that invested in our institution. Over the course of the summer, when the rest of state government took a twelve percent reduction, higher education did not, because of the investments that Governor Lee and the General Assembly made in this university and others. And as we look to the session that's underway, I'll be in Nashville on Monday, presenting the budget in front of House Ed, House Finance, and I'll be back on Wednesday in front of Senate Ed. We support the THEC Outcomes Formula, the enhanced support for DeQuillan College of Medicine and deferred maintenance projects. We've got some work to do on capital funding, which I'll talk to you about, some elements in Gattin, and then we're looking at how we can have some operational flexibility with respect to COVID. I've shared this with you before. Once again, it's a reminder, here's the level of new support that we're scheduled to receive from the state, the number-two-performing institution in the state of Tennessee on the Outcomes Formula. Capital. I shared this chart with you in November. I felt confident that the building, the academic building, a fifty-two-million-dollar project in the center of the campus core would be funded. Unfortunately, we find ourselves on the outside, but we're confident that we'll be able to work with members of the General Assembly to help state the importance of this building. We would take the old academic student center in the, in the main portion of campus across from Nick's Hall to the ground, replace this with a state-of-the-art academic building, a building in which forty-four percent of our students will take classes during a point in their undergraduate career, no new net-square footage addition to the campus. As capital lists were made, the number-five project and the number-six project were omitted to fund the number-seven and the number-nine project. And we'll work with the General Assembly here in the months to come to talk about the important role that this building will play for ETSU. As we look at some select initiatives for the spring, you've already heard about the search that's underway for the provost, work that's underway for marketing. We're still implementing some changes to our advising and scholarship programs. David Golden talked to you today about the Research Foundation. We're working closely with Ballad to link our efforts with Ballad in some new and exciting ways. And then we've got to close out that capital campaign, which right now is a little bit south of a hundred million dollars, to bring it in at one-twenty-five, so we can finish those projects and move into one-twenty-five, Chapter Two. I know you all are as tired of talking about COVID as I am. We're thankful to have this building to meet in person today, and I thank the board for pushing us to meet in person today. We sent messages out to the campuses earlier this week that we have begun preparations to return to a more traditional on-ground environment for the fall. We will put in place safety protocols, cleaning protocols, et cetera, but we're preparing. It's February. We've got a lot of time to prepare, but we're preparing for increased occupancy in our residence halls, for restoration of on-campus activities and events, but we're going to do so safely, and we're going to keep safety at the forefront. Moving forward, Dr. Hoff talked about celebration. We're going to celebrate at the individual and institutional level. And I know the meeting is running long, and I've been at the podium for far too long, but if you could just give me a few more minutes, I want to celebrate a couple of things. First, I want to congratulate trustee Virginia Foley for her selection on the All-Southern Conference Faculty and Staff Team. She was selected as one of the outstanding faculty across all the member institutions of the Southern Conference. We received more than three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars within the past few weeks to support our Student Support Services Grant, which is a grant that helps students with disabilities and first-generation students realize their dreams and graduate. Dr. Lynn Williams, Associate Dean in the College of Clinical and Rehabilitative Health Sciences, was named the President of the American Speech Language Hearing Association for the 2021 academic year. Many of you were involved in the RONE selection process, and we brought eight of the highest-achieving students in our region to this institution through that RONE Scholar Program that will start in the fall, one of whom is a student from Unicoi County High School, Mr. Trent White. Trent's college success counselor, a success counselor supporter through the Ayers Foundation, said, one of my favorite things about Trent is his go-getter spirit. If he sees a need and the solution doesn't exist, he'll create the solution. Trent, we look forward to having you on campus in the fall. And Dr. Bill Duncan, our Vice Provost for Research at East Tennessee State University, was named to the National Academy of Sciences Committee on Autoimmune Diseases. And as we look towards the future, and all the planning, and all the things that we're going to do, I'm confident that we can move past the challenges of the moment and unify this region around common goals, to unify this region around economic development and growth, and to serve as a beacon of hope for the institution. Dr. Hoff met with one of my favorite people in the world the other day, Dr. Bach, and Bert reminded Mike that it's not the dark ages, and a new age of enlightenment is going to come out on the backside of this. But we, as a campus, have to reflect, learn, and empower. This has been a hard month. It's been a hard month in more ways than one. We've lost a number of members of the University We've lost a number of members of the university family in the past month. In fact, as I stand here on this stage today, members of the university family gather together in Weber City to celebrate the life of Dr. Brian Oldell, a 53-year-old faculty member in the Gattin College of Pharmacy, who passed away this week. In a week and a half, in this very building, on this very stage, we will gather together as a university family to celebrate the life and the legacy of a faculty member who lost her hands, who lost her health and her life at the hands of violence. And I've said this to you all before, but I'll ask you again. Have you ever worked anywhere in your life where someone cared so much about the place that they called home that they asked to have your funeral services at your place of business? That will occur in this building in a week and a half. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I know that we find ourselves in difficult times as a region, as a campus, and as a nation, but I'm confident that the people will pull this institution through because they have done so since we opened our doors in 1911. Mr. Chair, members of the board, it's my honor to serve as President of this university, and it'd be my honor to address any questions that you have regarding the members that I, the issues that I've walked through today, or any other questions that members of the Board of Trustees may have.
Questions by the trustees.
Brian, I just want to say, your passion for this university is unquestioned, and I know that you love it with all your heart, and you give everything every day to this school, and I, for one, am appreciative of your efforts and of your passion because without that passion, it's just another job. But there's no question that you believe in this university. That being said, I want to ask you something. You know, we talked about the campaign, the committee for 125 earlier, and I am very proud of what the vision has given us from the last campaign, and I'm very excited to see what is in the future for our university. But I'm assuming a committee like that takes tremendous buy-in from the community to be successful. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you talk a minute about this committee for 125 vis a vis the controversy that you spoke about earlier in your presentation regarding the basketball team? And help us, as trustees, understand what your thoughts are on how we're going to get community buy-in considering the firestorm that's going on in this community right now over the kneeling for the National Anthem? And give us some perspective on how folks out there who are ETSU alumni, veterans who've attended ETSU, and others who would disagree with some of the premises that have been presented should approach this thing and should look at it and still be loyal to their school.
Trustee Wolf, thank you for the question, and I should have been taking notes to hit on that in the part, so if I don't touch on all the parts, come back. First, let me talk about the committee for 125. That group will be comprised of members of this board, community members, and national leaders in business, industry, and in higher education. And I think one of the opportunities that's presented through the committee for 125 is for that committee, this board, and the region as a whole to be reminded and to learn that the issues we're facing here, campuses all across the nation are facing. So this is not just a challenge facing higher education. I think it's a challenge that we face as a country of how can we come back together as a country and find commonality rather than continuing to be separated on specific issues. So to now come to your point around community support, I think it's our responsibility as a campus, you as a board, and for all of us to take a long view. There were lots of days when I was a teenager that I did things that my mom was disappointed with. I remember there was one time I came home from college and I was wearing some clothes that my parents didn't altogether agree with, and my hair looked a little bit different than it does now. And my dad said, "Son, I don't understand what's happening." And I said, "Well, Dad, I look the same way everybody else looks at school." He said, "You changed, and I'm disappointed." But the next morning, he said, "You know, Brian, I'm disappointed in you, but you're still my son, and I know the things you've done, and I know the things you're capable of doing." This university is part of the fabric of this institution and the fabric of this community. It's all intertwined. That's why I described it as a quilt, and the flag's part of that quilt. The VA is just right there. We may be upset about the most recent incident of the day, but if you step back and take a long view at what this institution has done, I'm confident that the people who care and understand and can let emotions settle a little bit will see that this is an institution that does things the right way. Our largest student group is the Well. This is an institution that does things the right way. So now to your final point around what do I say to those individuals who are clearly upset? I have about 200 emails that I've not had a chance to get to in the past few days getting ready for the meeting or today. I have friends who've told me they're no longer my friends. I have business associates who've said they will no longer do business with this university. And I've got family members who are mad at me, as I referenced in my comments. I've got to begin the process, person by person, handshake by handshake, to remind them that who we are as a campus today is no different than who we were as a campus last Friday. The campus is no different than it was, and hopefully, once emotions settle, people will see that the university has not changed. But I know we have a lot of work to do to rebuild faith, and for some people, I don't know if it'll be possible to rebuild that faith because this is such an emotionally charged issue. I don't know if I addressed all three of your questions, sir.
You gave it a great stab for no notes. I just, you know, there are other viewpoints out there about the situation, and it is something where you certainly don't want to in any way infringe upon someone's right to speak their mind. But as you discussed during your points, you know, there's a, there's a team, and when you're a member of that team, I think you have a higher obligation to this university than just saying anything and doing anything that you want. And I know we, as trustees, have a similar obligation. As trustees, we have to set aside some things of our own preference and act as representatives of the university. And I think that has been lost in this discussion by and large. And I know we talked about tolerance and inclusivity in your comments, and I certainly appreciate and respect that, but people who disagree with the team's decision, really, the coach's decision, are just as valid in those opinions as the players to have made that move. So I want to make sure as we have this discussion that nobody is ostracized necessarily, one side or the other, and I hope that as a representative in this community, you can continue to display this passion that you've got. I know you've put your heart, your soul into this university, and I applaud you for it. And, you know, leaders like you are rare and far between. They are rare and far between. But you've got a little bit of a challenge. As if COVID wasn't enough, you've got a little bit of a challenge to rebuild some trust here because I think things were handled very, very poorly.
Yes, sir.
Questions? Thank you, Dr. Nolan.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you very much. I do hope that, on a little bit of a lighter note, Mr. Ross mentioned this being a percentium stage in earlier session and that there being an invisible wall here. I hope that we can break walls down across this region and welcome people into this building soon. We're going to have one heck of a party when we open this building, and I look forward to the day when we have some things on the stage, other than the board. Not that I don't love being with the board, but this was never meant to be our boardroom, but to keep you all safe with COVID, we had to find the biggest space we could, and outside of the dome, this is the biggest building on campus. So thank you for allowing us to hold our first board meeting in person since COVID in a building that we're extremely proud of. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Nolan. Is there other business to come before the board today? Hearing none. Since there is no need today for an executive session, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Governor Ramsey for a motion of adjournment of the Board of Trustees.
I'll move with adjourned.
Thank you.
Very good. We stand adjourned.
You have a vote on it?
Oh.
Thank you.
Anybody against it?